All right, let's call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. It's like it could be a relatively short meeting, although we do have a RFP at 10:30. 10:30. So we'll see how things play out. But we, in all likelihood, will take a recess when we finish our work and come back for the RFP at 10:30. So let's start with Attorney Ron Cross. What have you got for us today, Ron?
This is a draft in market study. It is of the resolution to transfer detail properties to the city that we talked about last week. I want, if you look at that, it doesn't have the legal. Make sure I get the list complete.
All right. Is it, this is two pages, okay.
Two pages. So look at those. And then the legal descriptions will be on Exhibit A. I had nine, and I, maybe my notes were wrong and said 10, but I wasn't sure if I used one or maybe my notes were wrong.
And then we also are considering, and I talked to the folks at Building Together yesterday. There are two properties with structures that appear to be in pretty bad shape and have some, I think, some unsafe building issues. But I talked to them about whether they would be interested in taking those on as continued projects.
So there are not pending, there's no unsafe building proceedings pending?
We're working on, we're working through that.
Oh, we are.
I'm talking to the city about it. So anyway, those, those could be additions.
And again, this is not time sensitive or anything of that nature, as the notice says, we canceled the deed sales.
Right.
When you say time sensitive?
There is a timeline, though, that we're working against.
I think we talked at one point in time, that judge's order will last indefinitely.
No.
You think in a couple of months, two or three months?
I'll look at it and see. I haven't gone over and seen when the tax, when we got the tax deed.
Should have been, what, in first February?
February.
Something like that. Anyway.
You think so?
Just think of that as far as the timeframe.
Saw some email exchange on property on North 7th Street. I don't know if you're ready to talk about that or you want to wait. 547.
Do I know about that? I don't know.
This was a property that was purchased by the city of Richmond in an arms-length transaction with the owner. And there are taxes that.
Oh, I did see that, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Prior to the sale and frankly, that will be due after the sale. And the city thought it was exempt. I explained to the township trust assessor that, no, they're not. Though they're exempt, that doesn't make the taxes that were on it when they acquired it go away.
Go away, okay.
Now, there is a process that can happen. It involves you folks.
And I think we should probably pursue that. So I'll touch base with the mayor, see what, what they'd like for us to do. And then we can talk to the folks that would be involved at the county and see what they would be willing to do. Because there are, there are other elected officials involved other than the commissioners, would there not be? Okay. Okay, so we will continue to look at that. Anything else?
As to our RFP, we might, if we recess, call over and make sure that the sheriff's department knows if something, they get something to put it in. Get it, let us know.
Get it to us.
I, there was an ambiguity in the RFP request for proposals. And it said, I referred to the above address. Well, actually, there were two addresses. One was for the jail facilities, the most recent, the one I intended. It said the Commissioners at 401, you know, blah, blah, blah. That was what we intended. But given that ambiguity, I, if, as long as one is received and we made it, I think we can leave that.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, any questions for Ron? All right, Steve, are you ready to proceed?
Okay, looking at your project sheet, the NX generator, last word we had, and I sent an email out like yesterday to confirm this. That part was supposed to be delivered that we're waiting on this week. Have not heard back. However, I think as, we should at least anticipate this project is going to come to a close sometime. Well, sometime.
That would be nice.
Sometime soon.
That would be better.
And remember, you know, we had some issues during that one startup period that we alleged that we had sustained some losses. I would suggest that we have an executive session to talk about potential litigation. And obviously, the folk, the individual from ELZ needs to be here. So whatever, if you can zero in, update time, then I'll see if that would work.
Okay. Ron, did you see that email?
Yes.
Okay, and so a, an executive session would be appropriate to discuss issues around that?
Among us, not among the headfirst party.
Okay.
Just ours and our people, whoever we feel we need, which would be our.
I'd like ours to be first of the week.
Sure, absolutely. So we'll try to get that scheduled. Is there, is there any kind of timeline that we need to be operating?
48 hours, if that's.
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about getting back with the folks that, that we sent the letter to.
I'd have to look at this, but typically, claim is filed, it's filed before the project was complete. So our substantial completion, so there really isn't. There will be, once the architect, who is the initial decision maker, looks at the claim and the data and makes a preliminary determination, then that starts a process that can result in. First step would be negotiations with, through the architect. Then we would have, before we can go to final resolution, we have mediation.
Okay.
Mediation is the last step before mediation.
And, and.
We, the critical time, the critical timeframe was getting the.
We already met. We sent the letter.
Yeah.
Within a certain number of days. So is any of that in public meetings? Any of those discussions or negotiations, as you referred to?
Typically, I would, no, no, there would not be.
But they wouldn't be in executive session either?
Well, they could, you know.
Could be, okay. But first step for us would be executive session with our own folks.
For strategy, with respect.
Here we discuss.
Possibility of initiating a litigation.
Okay, okay. We can do that. Steve, go back to you.
Okay. Nothing new on the fairgrounds parking issue. The courthouse front entrance. So you have a sheet before you that looks like this.
Yes.
So if you're facing, that sheet's facing north. Down the lower right-hand corner is a highlighted area. What, this is a proposed handicap ramp, and that was not in the original bid or drawings. We didn't really think about it during the time. And what this will facilitate is that to the south of that is where the handicap parking is. And so you know, our new ramp is that sidewalk to the left of that highlighted area. And the proposal is to put a handicap ramp there at a small curb so that no one parks on that handicap ramp. And what that will do is to keep these folks who park in these handicap spots from having to walk out around that island to the existing handicap ramp. So I really recommend that we do this. Don't have a cost yet. The contractor indicated that he would have that to me today so that we can take it to council and yourselves tonight. But I think, in my mind, I recommend we do this, subject to.
Have available funds.
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I agree. I think safety needs to be uppermost in our minds and go and clear out into the street to get around to the handicap ramp.
I know it's been a complaint in the past, so.
Correct.
And I don't think that's ADA compliant either, is it? I mean, totally?
It is, because it's not a street, it's a parking lot.
Okay, fair.
So it's not, it's not.
It wasn't when it was a street.
Correct. But it is ADA compliant, but it certainly could be safer.
Sure, thank you.
And then, timing on this now.
So, yeah, timing on this. Obviously, what I would like to happen is this gets approved tonight, and then I would tell them tomorrow morning. They believe, they, the contractor, believe that they can do this as well as the other pour on Friday. Because we've got some income of weather coming in. They're out there today, they've actually moved the chain link fence over a little bit so they can still do some work further, closer to the door, so.
But all the noisy stuff would be on Friday. Actually, jackhammering, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so I really think, or at least Steve Schute thinks it'll work, that they'll get this in on Friday.
Is there, is there any danger that, you know, they get it done Friday afternoon, evening?
No, they'll cover it. They can cover it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see that as an issue. We dealt with that before, but. So you want to motion that, or you want to do that tonight?
I think we're good to just bring it to them tonight. With a number, you know, if it comes in at $17 million, I don't think Aaron and I are going to vote to approve.
I understand. Maybe 15, it's less than that. Yeah, it's less than that, okay.
16.9999 million, that's a different story.
Okay. And then after that, then, once, once they get past this weekend, if it goes as planned, then they'll move the chain link fence over and start with the front plaza portion itself and.
And then we're off to the races.
Exactly. And then the proxy card system, they continue to do their work and no issues have been presented. Along with that, I do have the draft of the proxy card policy that you folks will need to consider prior to implementation. I'll send that out to you probably later this afternoon. Remember, we have a Department head and election officials meeting next week. I'd like to send that to them.
I would like for you to send that to them.
Okay.
And send it beforehand.
Correct.
We can tentatively approve that tonight to, to send out.
You want to see it before tonight, then?
That's a possibility.
And then.
See how quickly you can get it to us after the meeting.
If it's anything like that 2010 document, I've got it ready.
He wrote it back in 2010.
I've had this written all along. Anyway, and then after you get your input from the Department head and election officials, then you folks can consider it. And then I've reached out to LWC this morning, haven't heard back yet, to see if they've got a date and an estimated time to remove that debris of the elevator shaft.
So we don't have a date yet?
I don't have a date, as of, maybe I'll have one tonight. Any questions on the projects?
I have one. Has, have you reached out or has anybody reached back out to you about keys, access to the courthouse for this weekend?
No. I know you reached out, well, you said something to them.
I told them to get with you.
Oh.
Or Dale.
Okay. You not got with me.
You might check with Dale.
I'll send another reminder out today.
Yeah, because we need to get this to them.
Today or tomorrow. Yes, so, thank you. Because I know there's a couple.
Sure.
Who are planning on coming in this weekend, for sure.
Yep.
But. If they don't have, if they don't have a key, they won't be able to get in, right?
Get in.
Correct. So thank you.
Okay, just tell them to call Steve at home.
I will. I'll give them his home and cell phone number, whatever you got.
Remember, on the fleet safety policy, we're still, got a couple little issues to resolve. Remember the one issue that we talked about? About the, who was on the driver authorization list? And whether or not the independent contractor should be on there? So I had billion grounds to go back and look the past year to see if, in fact, our pool cars have been given out to someone other than an employee. The only ones that he found, first of all, Barb Mailey is not on that list, and she's the contracted person with the court, so she's not on the list. The only other two that were on there that are, was Mike Shipman and one, and the certain court judge. So there were three episodes in the last year where someone other than the elected officials who are department heads and employees.
County employees. And the prosecutor and the judges are not county employees.
I think they're state employees. Yeah, so. I guess my, I think I would go back to what we had originally. It's kind of like we're going to do the proxy card. The judges don't want the proxy card, that's okay, but they won't get access to the building. And so if these two elected officials, well, you know, they've got to have a proxy card.
Except during business hours.
Correct. And that's in the, and that language is in the policy that they may display it if they want, it's their discretion. But in this case, I think we would add just prosecutor, the judges, should they want to use a pool car, they need to be on the authorized list.
And I'm not even sure.
You don't even want to do that?
Well, I, we need to talk about it. We need to talk to our insurance company, I think, because they're not county employees. And so, you know, can we insure them when they're not county employees?
I think we probably could. It just depends on how the terms of their policy is going to read and whether ours is primary and their personal.
What came to search out that answer with?
As far as that goes, I think we can. And why I say that?
You know what? Thinking that we can.
Well, here's, here's why. First of all, we have reserve officers at the sheriff's office who are not county employees, who are authorized to drive county vehicles. I know that's a different, but still.
More direct connection to us, their county volunteers.
Right.
And those are covered.
Right.
And so, you know, my question would be the connection that seems like it might cover them, is we pay them a stipend.
Right, yeah.
The judges and the prosecutor. But I just, I just want to make sure that, because all of this is, is for our insurance.
Right, correct.
And to make sure that we have as, as limited a liability as we can, that we're covering all the bases. And to me, this is a, a question mark that we need to address before we build it into the policy.
And then Dakota, the employee who's moved from Soil and Water will be moving here, and we have her space set up. Desk and chair down there, they're bringing a file cabinet today. IT will be installed, a computer and phone, four weeks end. And she's coming tomorrow to meet with me and probably Kim.
Okay.
So I think we're ready to move forward.
Simona, do you know off the top of your head, do, have we set up a, a fund for recycling?
Yes, I did. It's 4013.
Okay, and so we've received an initial payment from WUR into that fund?
Oh, we have received it yesterday, okay.
Okay.
It is in there.
Okay, good, good. So tonight, we'll, we'll talk to council about appropriation of that, those dollars.
That in your, that been the Commissioner's account?
Sorry?
That been the Commissioner's account?
No.
I know it. Just wanted to see your answer.
Well, you heard me ask her, did you set up a separate account for recycling?
See if you were thinking.
It's not that early in the. So the money will need to be appropriated and budgeted. I drafted a budget that I sent to Councilman Ritter, and we'll hopefully have that done by the first meeting in May so that we can appropriate funds into those line items. I think the plan at this point is to continue to pay her out of the general fund budget of Soil and Water. There's annual salary is a line item in Soil and Water.
That's it, I'm going to have Pam move her to my Kronos administrative.
You can move her to your Kronos, but you can't move her out of the Soil and Water.
I know, and I think.
Connection until.
I think because, you know, I have, I have other employees paid out in multiple accounts. I think just, just move her to Kronos, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, good.
And then, you know, the committee, the committee we have together with EDC with moving, gathering information for that land bank proposal. They are proposing meetings, and in your case, it would be some county official meetings on April 30th or May 1st. They don't have that, I don't have a schedule yet, but those are the two days that they've chosen. Don't have a time? April 30th is your fifth Wednesday meeting?
Aaron's not going to be available for either of those meetings.
Which day?
April 30th or May 1st.
That's correct. I'll be out.
So we'll, we'll sort through it.
Okay.
I do intend to meet that day, if for no other reason than to take care of claims. But we'll see. If Brad is unavailable, then we'll have to, I'll have to rethink that.
I'll shoot you an email, just, they'll probably want to know at times or then later, so they can make this schedule, because there's other groups that they want to meet with.
Good for them.
Okay.
Just trying to be. I think those that are paying the bills have some priority on.
Let's try to, you know, let's try to be obliging to folks.
I always try to be obliging. You're, you're still wound up from.
I'm on painkillers, right? Yes. And then.
You know, I could have done that for free.
Tried.
I got a call from Mount Auburn. The town is requesting the county assist them with unsafe structures. Don't know what this entails. I think at the very least, I'll meet with their town council and get what they're, what they want, if they have any money, if they have an ordinance. If, is it, are they contributing to the.
They're not. They are not. And they did not participate in helping, nor are they participating in our current planning process, which they were invited to do. So if, let me know when you're planning to meet, and I may want to try to go along with you.
That might be.
Have a little wider discussion.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions?
How's the partnership with Greens for work? Kind of, we, we're working with them, everything going well there?
Yeah. It's been pretty low-key.
I figured it wouldn't be, but.
I think we won't have one.
So we're currently then working with them, and then everything's, okay, good, perfect?
So we are, we're doing inspections for them and issuing building permits.
And checking flood plain.
Okay.
Not much of the town is in the flood plain, there's only a couple. They've, they've got a flood plain, but the only structures that are in it are a couple of homes on the northwest corner. Everything else is.
Okay.
Which is kind of surprising, but.
Well, there's kind of that, that elevation.
I think the elevation is, keeps them safe, but.
Yeah, so the lower, the lower level is the part that's in the flood plain, obviously right next to the river.
Yeah, but there's only like two structures in the town that's in the flood plain, so it shouldn't present as too much of an issue.
Okay, good.
That's all I have.
I just, as we continue to get requests from some of the smaller towns, we need to be careful and, and work with council as we do this, because as, as, we need to make sure that we have the resources.
Yeah, we had, we'd gotten one from Hagerstown a number of months ago when they were struggling to find somebody. They've since found somebody three times. But I know that it, it seems like the smaller communities and with stretched resources.
Sure.
It's, it's tough and.
Well, and it may be time to see if, if folks want to join together and put together a civil department.
We've had those discussions several years ago. Didn't generate much interest because they want to remain independent, if you will, but.
But I think we, we pushed those discussions, and now it's kind of coming back from the towns to us. So I think it would potentially be worthwhile to see where we're at. But, you know, we can't do the whole county without additional resources, certainly. So given the circumstances, the governor signed Senate Bill 1. And so over the next several weeks, we'll be finding out exactly what that means. The, my initial communication with Representative Barrett was that it looks like the version that passed and the governor signed will mean somewhere between a 5% and 6% reduction for the county in, in property tax revenue.
Is that the whole county or just us?
That's us. It varies a little bit, whether it's a school system or a, or a town or the city. But it's.
It's similar.
It's, it's similar, but, you know, 1% more or less can be a significant issue. So, so we'll, we'll see how that goes and what alternatives are available if they become necessary.
That's all I have.
That's all you have, but let's go back now that Mike's here. Any progress at all on the parking planning for the fairgrounds? Like, anything you're aware of? Is Brandon looking at that? See the deer in the headlights look, so.
He's like, that's not why I'm here.
I know, it's him. But he is here.
Easier not, love it, yeah.
I don't know, you look at him, he may not be here.
I don't, I don't know what I'm saying.
Okay.
Remember, remember you were going, I remember I sent you that drainage plan that I know of for that area. And then I thought, as I recall, that you and Brandon and Gordon were going to determine what drainage plan we need to have in place before you would grab them.
I'll check with them.
Okay, great.
I think I talked with Brandon, I think we talked with Brandon when here, and I didn't want to speak for Brandon, so.
I didn't know if you guys had.
Don't want to speak for him today either? Okay.
I'll check with him, see where it stands.
It's not a bad plan.
Good, good.
That's the plan.
All right, it is.
It's 9 o'clock.
9 o'clock, by that clock, so.
Go over your kids.
Do we have bids for the bid opening?
You want me to pop them open and then hand them around?
Slip those open and then we'll pass them to Ron. We don't, we don't trust Ron with sharp objects, so.
I've been told that before.
Oh, this is for the second round of bids for the.
The asphalt.
Community crossings.
Community crossings, paving projects. And this is materials only, right?
Yes.
Just pull this trailer, man. We're gonna easily do it.
Three of them. There you go.
There you are, Ron. So, uh, while Ron is taking a look at those, uh, let me just fill you guys in. Uh, Mike and I, uh, met with Sheriff Redder yesterday. We reviewed a, a letter from the sheriff from, uh, last fall as we purchased, uh, electronic speed limit signs, uh, as part of our ARPA programming. Um, we've been looking at where should those go, how should we approach this. So, uh, the three of us, uh, agreed with essentially the list the sheriff submitted back then. We are, start following up with the towns. Uh, in one case, there's a school, uh, to, to make sure that they're interested in having those, um, and we'll work with Ron to have a, a letter of agreement so that, uh, our intention would be that, that the highway department would, would put those up, uh, if they're within corporate limits, uh, but we still need to have, uh, a permit from INDOT if they're on a state highway. And then our intention would be to give those to the towns that, that they're in, and the, the town then will be responsible for maintaining those into the future. Remember, they have, they're, they're solar powered, but they also have batteries that operated at night and so on, and so those batteries, uh, they're out from time to time, uh, those kind of things. And then we also, uh, would like for the sheriff to have access to the information that's collected. Now, it's, it's essentially like a, a traffic count where it records, uh, how many vehicles have passed and their, and their speeds, uh, so that the sheriff could use that to say, there's a lot of people exceeding the speed limit by X percent in this location, and so it may be, uh, a place where we want to do increased patrolling, that kind of thing, so, uh, so we're working on that, um, and, uh, we'll keep you posted. Uh, I'll, I'll distribute this, uh, locations again to everyone as we, as we get confirmation from folks that they're willing to take one or two.
How many signs are there?
There are twenty signs, but typically they go in pairs.
Right, so ten locations.
So, there are ten locations, um, on either side of a, of a community, for example. So, I'll keep you posted.
We're going up at the highway this morning.
Just to see...
See how it goes together.
See how it works, okay, good.
All right, to see how it works and so forth before we go out on the road, make sure...
Great.
It's gonna work with our signpost and have a log man and things like that. I know they had to get some flams and, some things that didn't come with the kits per se, but we're gonna kind of see what we need, and...
Good.
Now, we get with INDOT and setting those locations up on the state roads. And I think the first one up on Central Road up by, uh, Allen Williamsburg is where we're gonna start. And I set the first two, because it's not as highly traveled area with INDOT roads, and, uh, we can kind of see how it works and kind of go from there. It'll be a quicker process and that's it.
Yeah, okay, good deal. Thank you, Mike. I really appreciate your help on that. Um, okay. What do you find? Three bids that meet all the criteria?
To beat the two I look for.
Okay. So, the plan, Mike, then, is you'll take these and you'll come back next week with, uh, recommendations on both, both bids?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. We take these bids under advisement?
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? You're, and all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Any other questions for Mike? Do you have any emails for us?
We got pickup truck quotes. So, in our plan for 2025, uh, was to buy two, uh, pickup trucks.
Okay.
So, we got three quotes. Um, Larkin Greenwood Ford, um, Greg Hubler Automotive, and then Wettzel Automotive Group. Uh, Larkin came in at the lowest price. Uh, they're from Connersville. Uh, the price was forty thousand, five hundred and one dollars. So, that's a mistake we're gonna...
It actually says the price for three, but it's the price for two, right?
That's for two. I didn't change that. That was, twenty-three, we bought three trucks, and I just...
No problem.
Having a look at that, I, I didn't change that.
No problem.
And, uh, thanks. So, it'll be for two pickup trucks. The lowest price is ninety-seven thousand, two dollars, uh, from Larkin Greenwood Ford. Um, so it depends on which way you want to go. You want to go with lowest or...
Yeah. Uh... Did, uh, did Wettzel request the buy local, uh...
No, they didn't.
Okay. Let's, um, take these under advisement, and, uh, we'll get back with you. Is there a, a time limit on their price?
Yes. Well, to order pickup trucks for 2025, uh, the end of April is the last day.
Okay, so if we, if we, uh, take care of this next week, that'd be time enough, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Do I have a, uh, motion to take these under advisement?
I'll make a motion to take, uh, these quotes under advisement.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? And, uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Are those on the QPA, Steve? Do you know?
Are they on QPA?
They're not. No, you could, yeah, I looked, and there's no QPA on them.
I don't think, I don't think there are any vehicles, except for vans, on QPA.
Yeah, I think with the way the, uh, vehicle market is, they just, they don't need to really give much of government.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? All right, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good day. Okay, Steve, you've had nothing else?
No.
Mark, do you have anything for us?
The, the bid that Mike just got, uh, there were three of them. The one name I didn't recognize, I think it was from Connersville.
Okay.
Are we waiting on a truck from them? Well, we are, from last year. And I didn't know if, if there was a time, uh, estimate on when you could give...
What truck are we waiting on?
Well, I just was talking to Linda about it, and, and they, I, I'll find out, because I gotta talk to Mike about it. And I didn't know if, if there was a time limit on how long we can wait, or have to wait to get the truck.
Not if the, not if the money is available, and, um, the challenge right now is still the ordering process. This is not to receive these trucks, this is to order them.
Right, but I thought we were still...
Next year, it could be next year on these for, for all we know.
I know the health department just ordered, got a vehicle from Larkin, correct?
That's who it is.
Yeah.
It's the health department.
But it was already in, yeah.
And it was a truck?
No, it was a...
The car.
Yeah.
But it's in.
Yeah. They had it in stock and got it, so...
They were waiting on a check yesterday.
You think that was it?
Okay.
Or you think there's...
No, that's it.
Okay.
I'm in the wrong office.
You're supposed to, well, you're in the wrong chair.
Yeah. That's by design.
All right. Um, do you want to go ahead and take care of...
I have a few things here for us. How's that? Uh, first of all, the proclamation for, uh, the Wayne County Reeds Summer 2025, uh, for, set for April 28, 2025, uh, to July 31st, 2025. I asked for a motion to, uh, to approve, uh, the proclamation.
Did you make the motion, or are you...
I would like, yes, I'm making the motion to approve.
And I would second that motion.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? So, this is for, uh, an event for every child can read next, next week.
Correct. It's Friday.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, uh, approving the, the proclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. And we will get that signed and, uh, and stamped, sealed.
Yes.
Signed, sealed, and delivered.
And delivered.
Okay.
Um, then I'll, I have, uh, like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners, April 9th, 2025.
You made that motion?
I did.
And I will second that motion. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
And then I have, like to make a motion to approve following claims. Mastercard paid for 14, 2025. Federal payroll taxes and perf, uh, April, dated April 17th, 2025. Dunflex garnishments dated April 17th, 2025. Payroll infringed benefits dated April 17th, 2025. Veterans assistance dated 4/15/2025. Jury pay dated 4/15/2025, and general claims dated 4/16/2025.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
There's a claim in there for, uh, audits of Centerville Abington schools.
Indeed, there is.
That, um, I'm still not real satisfied with the answer I've received back from, uh, the state as to the size of the audit. I went ahead and presented it to you so that if, yeah, or when I get an answer, it's almost three times what it was last year for the same, I think is the same audit, but, uh, I gotta find out. It's thirty-some thousand. Last year it was seven. Too big of a difference for me to just go ahead and pay it, so we're still looking. I've been told that, one of my staff contacted them, and they said, yeah, it's, it's fine, it's okay, but for me, that's not an answer. They, it just kind of felt like they were blowing us off on it. So, it's in there. You, you authorize it, I'll pay it. I'm gonna hold it till I can get an answer, and then I don't have to wait till the next meeting to get it paid.
All right.
Center, who is it?
It is, which school? There's two.
Centerville Abington.
Centerville Abington, and there's, there's one other, uh, audit that we're paying for.
Yeah, there were two to, yeah. The thirty thousand to Centerville is the one I'm questioning.
I understand, but do you remember who the other one was? Wasn't, it was, was it Richmond? Richmond Schools? I think they were both schools.
Yeah, it was Richmond something, sanitary or school or something, one of those. That one I don't have a problem with. It's, it's just the size of this one compared to what we paid last time for the audit.
It could be a different audit, because they're basically, you know, there'd be the, the internal compliance audit, and then there's the CFA audit.
Exactly, and if it's the CFA, it could be thirty thousand dollars by itself.
True. I don't know, I, I don't know enough about their operations, but there are, yeah, so you can't assume that they were the same auditor as last year.
Right.
Without seeing the audit itself. We're going online looking at it.
So, a grant that puts them over, uh, a specific total, uh, from the, the federal government will trigger that audit. All right, um, as we said, we have a 10:30, um, schedule for opening RFPs for healthcare service for, uh, for the jail, so we will, at this point, take a recess, and we will come back into session, uh, to address that, uh, that request for proposals. We're in recess. All right, let's call this commissioner meeting back into session. Uh, we are here to open, uh, proposals for medical services for the Wayne County Jail. Uh, do we have proposals?
We have two.
All right. Let's get those open and get them to our attorney.
Here's the first one.
Have you sit next to Ron for this?
No, I, no, I like this. No, I really don't. This is, this is the best.
That was close.
Out of my hand quickly. And there's the second one.
Record show that Commissioner...
Oh, she's not going there.
Okay, we have two proposals. The first is from Quality Correctional Care out of, I believe, Carmel.
Well, that's, okay.
Bringing them back is always more difficult than taking them out.
Says it's one of two, but I assume it's two copies.
So, it's not two separate proposals?
Let's look, let's see, but we have, we have received two packets from Quality Correctional. We'll have to analyze those and see if they're, if all the separate proposals are, perhaps of all, we don't, we don't... And then the second one is from... Comprehensive Correctional Care. Benton Contagious.
All right. Do we have a motion to take these under advisement?
I'll make a motion to take these bids under advisement.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion?
Something, um, please keep in mind, uh, as you consider these, I don't know what your timeline is on these, but our contract expires with Quality Correctional Care at the end of this month. Um, that's only a couple of weeks away, um, and, you know, if quality is not chosen, um, for whatever reason, then that would almost make it impossible timeline for anyone else to get started.
Appreciate the comment. I think our, our process would be to have you and your staff review these, uh, in detail and make a recommendation to the commissioners. Um, and, you know, so in part, it will depend on the timing of your, your review.
And so everybody understands, we, these are proposals, they're not bids. We reserve the right, and probably we'll have, have to utilize it for our representatives, which would be the sheriff and his staff to contact representatives of the proposers to get clarification. If there might be a voluntary alternate, uh, bid and flesh that out, we have an obligation, overarching obligation of good faith, but, uh, there's a lot of, uh, potential follow-up that's gonna have to occur, so. I would suggest the first step would be, we can get this copied. We need, we need a set of copies. Give, hold the originals here, give the sheriff copies. I can get it with him. I don't need to have him right now. I can examine my convenience later this afternoon or whatever.
So, if, uh, Randy, if we need to have special moment to, uh, review these and review your recommendation, you know, we just need forty... recommendation, you know, we just need 48 hours to, to call a special meeting, so. We can do that, you know, we, we meet again tonight at 6 o'clock, if you can review it that quickly, but that seems a little, little unusual, and of course, we meet again next Wednesday, so.
I think our target was the 23rd, and then.
At this point, I'm saying the ball's back in your court to review these and, and make a recommendation.
No, sir.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to take these two bids under, or two proposals under advisement, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same side, motion carries. So Bobby, we're adjourned here, and just very briefly, and if you can go over those for the sheriff. There, and we'll, we'll hear back from you.
I can get you my answer today.
All right, if there's nothing further, there is something.
Mike came in.
Oh, hi, Mike.
Just wanted to talk to you about the fairgrounds.
Oh, thank you.
You talked to?
I talked to Brandon.
Okay.
So I guess what they're waiting on is what the final decision was on where you want the parking lots.
Okay, I thought we had talked about on.
We, we had presented the one parking lot on the east side, on that proposal, that's the proposal you're okay with.
I think so.
And then you talked about other parking lots and things, so we didn't know, I guess you didn't know exactly if you decided on that proposal that we proposed to go with.
I think we, we want to start with your proposed proposal.
Okay, okay.
And then we'll be going to propose.
On the east side of Expo Hall.
I agree. The design that we came up with and.
The design with some refinements for whatever drainage plans needed. We talked about leaving the tree stump that's carved and put that within one of the, one of the grassy drainage areas.
Right.
But some of the other trees.
Okay, he is wondering for sure if that's, you're okay with that proposal, but.
Yeah, well.
That was set up, because if you, if it widens or bigens, then that changes the scope of the piping, or if you're planning on going farther south at any point in time.
As the framework, and we, as you're looking at that, we want also to consider whether some of the infrastructure for camping can be put left in grassy areas for the, that, that won't be paved.
Okay, okay.
So that we don't have to take out the water and sewer connections. Other than that, I think, we're, we're looking at that as a starting point, and once we know what the cost might be, then we can expand out from there if we choose to.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, if there's nothing further, we are adjourned.